We will call the Pennington County Commission meeting for May twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by County Auditor Julie Pearson.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and before we proceed, there will call on Commissioner Troutman for some instruction.
The county commission will be recessing shortly to attend the cornerstone dedication ceremony in our new administrative building directly to the east. We invite everyone to join us, and after the ceremony, we will be returning here for cookies and coffee.
Thank you. Next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. Per Mike Cool, I would respectfully request that you remove item fourteen C from the agenda today.
Are there any other changes that anyone wishes to make to the agenda?
Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented without one correction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Okay, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of May sixth, two thousand and fourteen. Approval of vouchers in the amount of two million, seven hundred, eighty-four thousand, three hundred, fifty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Number seven is to order the election be held on July second, two thousand and fourteen, at two P.M. for the determination of the organization of the Wheaton Road District as submitted by the auditor's office. To order... Number eight is to order the election to be held on June eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven P.M. for determination of the organization of the Cimarron Hill Road District as submitted by the auditor's office. Number nine is approval of the resolution to discharge county liens of deceased persons as submitted by the auditor's office. Number ten is approval of the resolution to discharge county aid liens with no activity for thirty years as submitted by the auditor's office. Number eleven is to recognize the volunteers for the month of April, two thousand and fourteen, as submitted by Human Resources. And number twelve is approval of the resolution to dissolve Pennington County Tax Increment Finance District, number two, as submitted by Planning and Zoning.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have a motion to go into recess?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into recess. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We're in recess.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Welcome to everyone for coming and joining us today for our cornerstone dedication ceremony of the new Pennington County Administration Building. Commissioners Ron Baskarode and Ron Holloway, Ken Davis, and Chairman Lyndale Peterson and myself, Nancy Troutman, welcome you and are very thankful that so many of you came to enjoy a tradition that Pennington County has had for years. In nineteen twenty-two, our current courthouse on the far west side of this complex was dedicated also by the Freemasons of South Dakota, and we felt it would be important to continue that tradition with our new building. On the dais with the commissioners today are also the grand... the Masons of... I apologize if I messed that up. The Grand Masters of Masons of South Dakota, and I'm going to name them. There is Charles Gilson, who is the Grand Master, the Deputy Grand Master, who is Douglas McFarlane, and then we have Deputy Grand Master... I apologize. Senior Grand Warden, Donald Gray, Junior Grand Warden, Michael Rodman, Grand Secretary, G. Danny Robinson, and Grand Chaplain, John McKnight, and they will be taking us through the ceremony shortly. We also have joining us today some special guests. Qasai Alhaj is here representing Senator John Thune's office. Danica Almer is here representing Representative Kristi Noem's office. We have Chris Jacobson, who is our Deputy Executive Director of the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. I've not seen her right now. We also have Andy Skoll here, who is representing Skoll Construction, our contractor. We have Gene Fennel from Fennel Design Architectural... excuse me, and Ted Redman from Leo Daley. And you can see a whole group of men up here and women who have worked diligently and are doing a marvelous job with our building, and we thank them for coming today, too. We also have a former commissioner. Mark Kirkaby is here, and certainly he's been part of it, even though he no longer serves on the commission, he's been part of this for a lot of years. I really want to take just a minute to give special recognition to our building committee. It takes hours, and it's stressful, and we are not through yet. We have a lot of projects that we are working on, but this building committee has been critical in making sure we're making the right moves and building the right buildings, and I want to recognize them. Don Holloway, Commissioner, the Honorable Jeff Davis from Seventh Circuit Court, Janet Saylor, County Treasurer, Julie Pearson, County Auditor, Jay Alderman, Chief Deputy State's Attorney, Mike Peterson, Director of Buildings and Grounds, and Mike Cool, Construction Project Manager, and myself. We put in a lot of hours, and this is really a culmination of a lot of hard work, a lot of hard thought, and careful spending. So how did this day come to be? Pennington County has shown steady and sustainable growth. Gradually, as this growth increased, the amount of services and space that we needed to provide for the citizens of Pennington County, it became apparent that a plan for the future was needed. And I wish I could see that planning started just a few years ago, and we got it done, and here we are, and it's just moving along. It never worked that way. After all, we're a government entity, and we have planned, and we have changed plans, and we have gone different directions, but finally, we have a master plan that we are following. And I think that that is the critical thing for all of us. In two thousand and eight, we faced a reality that we had to wrote... begin to relocate our county departments, and the first one to move out was the Director of Equalization, and they've moved twice since they've moved out of the courthouse. And we knew that was going to continue to happen. That was not going to be convenient for our citizens, and it was not going to be cost-effective. So we began a process. The first thing we did, and this is because of the age of the nineteen twenty-two courthouse, we developed a historic preservation plan, and the county commissioners made a commitment to honor the historic value of the building and keep it as historic as possible while we began to create functional space. When this was completed in February of two thousand and nine, we began a master facilities plan, and that was a study of every building we owned. We looked at its viability, we looked at how long we might need to have that building work for us, we looked at the most critical needs of every building. And from that master plan, the first thing on the list was an administration building that would house all county departments so that citizens could transact business easily in one place. We extensively studied where to locate that structure, but because of funding constraints, it really proved best that we put it in this area where we currently stand. But before we could begin this structure, we partnered with the City of Rapid City, and I do see one of our council people up there, Richie Nordstrom, I'm sorry I missed you. We partnered with the City of Rapid City to add two more floors to the parking garage so that we could have adequate parking in the area. Then we built a new evidence building. The old one was falling down around our ears. It was not adequate for what we needed, and different functions and different storage of evidence was spread around the city. We've been able to bring that all together into one building, and that certainly has increased the effectiveness of the evidence storage and the evidence gathering and the evidence review. So finally, we get to begin to work on this building. This building will house the dispatch center, emergency management, public defender's office, the State's Attorney Office, the County Commission Office, and all those departments that the citizens use. And we look forward to the completion of that project this fall in two thousand and fourteen. But just as the cornerstone in our historic courthouse was dedicated in nineteen twenty-two by the Freemasons, we come here today to dedicate this cornerstone in two thousand and fourteen. Worshipful Grand Master of South Dakota, Charles Gilson. I welcome you and turn this ceremony over to you.
Good morning. Thank you all for coming. It's a pleasure. I'm re greeting the Grand Lodges and re-invested Masons. It's always an honor to come and perform this ceremony. Freemasons have been doing this since forever. The first one that I can remember, that I can recall was when George Washington dedicated the cornerstone in the Capitol. We have a long and rich history. I'm going to go a little bit before we go into the ceremony. There's a lot of non-Masons here today, and I'm... so that you can appreciate and understand some of what's going on, I'm going to explain some of the terms of doing what Freemasons do. You hear some things, you know, other than the fact that we're... some of us were... Freemasonry in a nutshell is a fraternity. Fraternity of men has been going on since hymen memorial dating back... anyway, everybody can hear me now? First Grand Lodge was formed in seventeen seventeen in England, and they elected a Grand Master to oversee the craft. Weekend date in South Dakota, we can place our Masonic genealogy to that first Grand We have a Grand Master that is in charge, and he's assisted by various elected officers and officials, as you see in the main flag this morning. We use terms like worshipful. Basically, it's not a religious type of thing, it's a title of honor for individuals that are in charge of or have been in charge of a specific lodge, or like a Grand Master. He's called most worshipful. You hear me? They refer to some of the brothers here as right worshipful, and that's because they're elected officials with him, and it's just a title. Come on into the position of worship. We wear aprons. I mentioned the aprons. First gift to Mason gifts when he enters the fraternity is a white leather apron, and its symbolic meaning is to represent innocence and purity of life and peace. So I'm having that present yourself among your brothers and your man friends. We practice the penance of brotherly love, relief, and truth. We also have the honor, if you will, to be devout men. We believe in the existence of a supreme being, but your own religion is your own joy in many of our brotherly prophets, in whatever faith they serve truth. With that said, as we do believe in the existence of a supreme being, we also like to start any and every important undertaking with prayer, as we believe that you should in both the blessing of you and the help of the brotherly. At this time, we have Worshipful Brother John McKnight, Grand Chaplain of Masons of South Dakota, to give us word.
Please stand as you're able. Let us pray. Great Architect of the Universe, Fountain of Light and Life, Peace and Joy, vouchsafe we humbly beseech thee from thy heavenly temple, thy blessing upon us and our present work. Direct us with thy most gracious favor and further us with thy continual help, that this work begun, continued, and ended in thee may glorify thy holy name. Send down the abundance of thy grace upon all gathered here in thy name and presence to dedicate this cornerstone of the Pennington County Administration Building. See that nothing may hinder the completion of this work as a tribute of gratitude to thee and of affection to thy servants. Built with no untimpered mortar, but cemented in unity and strength and fashioned in symmetry and beauty, may this structure be a sign and symbol of service to the citizens of Pennington County. May all those who will work within these walls be faithful public servants, working for the benefit of all the residents of this county now and in the years to come. May the present work of laying this foundation be true to the square, the level, and the plumb. Inspire individual character that shall be true to the principles of justice, righteousness, of purity, and equality, and universal liberty. Incline thine ear and hear the voice of our prayer, that our labors may rest in your everlasting arms, and our waking be the grand summons of thy children to the joy, the triumph of the lion of the tribe of Judah, in the city and temple, not made with hands, but eternal in the heavens. Amen.
Right Worshipful Brother Grand Secretary, will you read the history? You may be seated. Can everybody hear me? Pennington County was founded in eighteen seventy-five and organized in eighteen seventy-six. It is named after John Pennington, who was the governor of the Dakota Territory at that time. The first county commission meeting was held April nineteenth, eighteen seventy-seven in Rapid City. The first commissioners were R.H. Bosworth, Elwin McFarlane, and M.F. Fuller. F.P. Moulty served as the sheriff. The decision was made at that time to locate the courthouse in the town of Sheridan, which many of you know now as Underlake Sheridan. They held their first meeting May ninth, eighteen seventy-seven, in a log building. They met regularly there until it was decided to move back to Rapid City in November of eighteen seventy-seven. The first courthouse here was built in eighteen eighty-two for twelve thousand dollars, the same year Rapid City was incorporated as the city with a population of three hundred. This courthouse was destroyed by fire in eighteen ninety-seven, and a new courthouse was built on the same site and was used until nineteen twenty-two. In nineteen twenty-one, the commissioners decided to build a new courthouse and a jail to replace the old wooden building they were currently using. They hired architect William Halls of Kansas and builder A.J. Sugarman of Des Moines, Iowa, who had recently finished the court palace in Mitchell. They received the contract to build the third courthouse for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Courthouse was constructed of Indiana limestone, three stories high, one hundred and twenty-four foot long, and one hundred and two feet wide. On June fifth, nineteen twenty-two, the cornerstone was laid in a ceremony by the Grand Lodge of Masons of South Dakota, led by Grand Master H.R. Wharton. Concealed in that cornerstone was a photo of Pennington County, a card of historical record written by Henry Behrens, a copy of the Rapid City Daily Journal dated June fourth, nineteen twenty-two, a list of officers and employees of the Dunhill Milk Company of Rapid City, a list of personnel in the Rapid City Military Band, names of the county commissioner, a keystone of Archie McCarty dated eighteen seventy-three, a copy of a special edition of the Rapid City Journal of July fourteenth, nineteen twenty-one, a memorial to the Pennington County Bar Association, a business card from the Booth Hotel in Cuthbert, South Dakota, a list of the Grand Lodge offices, and several assorted coins. Work began in earnest by late fall of nineteen twenty-three, and work was completed, and the move-in began. The courthouse was completely occupied by early nineteen twenty-four, ninety years ago this year. The total cost for the courthouse at that time, which is the fourth, including the jail, was six hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and three dollars and thirty-five cents. Today, we proudly stand here to help dedicate this new addition to the Pennington County Courthouse complex. Our laying of the cornerstone is a reflection back to the previous ceremony performed in nineteen twenty-two, when the original courthouse was built. With temperance, fortitude, prudence, and justice, letter worshipful serve it. When in history men chose to build an edifice, there were always certain basics that had to be enforced or met. The site, the foundation, even the form, need to be dependable. The material had to be sound and long-lasting, and those who built it had to be trained in trustworthiness in their task. Certainly, these basics can be used to symbolically represent a life which is also meaningful and productive. Just as master masons use certain tools in the proper performance of his labors, so too are these same tools used to remind us all of those characteristics that are necessary to a life rich in fulfillment. The fairy fabric of Freemasonry is a series of lessons which illustrate by symbols the way for living a more virtuous life, which symbolizes a life filled with deeds that are right, honest, and fair, a life of tolerance, charity, and sincerity. These lessons are based on the builder's trade and on the tools in both their actual and symbolic uses. Right Worshipful Grand Secretaries, you are ready to tool for this dedication, to present them as the... Right Worshipful Deputy Grand Master, Grand Master relax. What is the proper jewel of your office?
The square.
What are its moral and Masonic uses?
The square or actions. By virtue of square and true virtue.
You will... you will receive the implement of your office, apply it to that portion of the foundation, and report.
I find the stone to be square. The craftsmen have performed it.
Right Worshipful Senior Grand Warden, what is the proper jewel of your office?
It's a microphone. What are its moral and Masonic uses? It reminds us of equality, its job, its...
You will apply it to the foundation and report.
Worshipful Grand Master, I find the stone to be level.
Right Worshipful Junior Grand Warden? What is the proper jewel of your office?
The plumb. What are its moral and Masonic uses? Moral idea teaches us lectitude and conduct, and we use it to try to...
You will receive the implement and apply it to several edges of the foundation and the...
Most Worshipful, I find that the stone is plumb. The craftsmen have performed their duty.
This cornerstone has been tested by the proper elements of Masonry. I find that the craftsmen have skillfully and faithfully performed their duty and do declare the stone to be well-formed, true and trusting, and correctly lay according to ancient craft. to ancient practice. We also use corn, wine, and oil for this ceremony. Humans need refreshment, and corn represents both the fundamental need for life and the blessing of plenty. Wine is not only refreshment for parts. Wine is not only refreshment for parts thoroughly, but also denotes the joy and gladness when friends and relatives gather together. In ancient times, oil was not only used for cooking and in the foundation. Symbolically, it represents peace and the concern for and protection of those who are in need. Expression through symbols has always been one of the ways we learn and remember things here and important to us. So the day we come to this place, this site, to express once more that link with the past, our responsibility to the present, and our hope for the future. Right Worshipful Deputy Grand Master, Grand Master relax.
I scatter this corn as an emblem of plenty. May the blessings of bounty as heaven shower down upon us from all like and patriotic and benevolent undertakings, and inspire the hearts of people with wisdom, virtue, and gratitude.
Right Worshipful Senior Grand Warden, present your oath.
I pour this wine as an element of joy and gladness. May the great ruler of the universe bless and prosper us. That harmony that is our strength, may the wine be refreshment for our people, our country, our state, our country. For all time, ever life.
Right Worshipful Junior Grand Warden, present your oath.
I pour this oil as an emblem of peace. May its blessings abide with us continually, and may the Grand Master of Heaven and Earth shelter and protect the widow and orphan, and so bestow his mercy upon the bereaved, deflected, and the sorrowing, that they no sorrow and trouble no more.
In the name of the supreme architect of the universe, I solemnly dedicate this edifice to the people and the county. Brother Grand Chaplain, will give the invitation.
Please stand as you are able. Let us pray. Great Architect, Grand Architect, thou art very great. Thou art clothed with honor and majesty. Thou did lay the foundations of the earth and ordained laws for its stability, which continue to this day. The heavens are the work of thy hands. Thou did garnish them with all their furniture and weave the web of all their beauty. At thy bidding, the light dawned, the flowers bloomed, and the forest forests clapped their hands. The morning stars sang together, and the sons of God shouted aloud for joy. We are thy workmanship, for thou didst form man and woman in your own image and likeness, the crown and flower of creation, the monarch of its soil and tribes, the great high priest to offer unto thee praise and thanksgiving. Thou art our salvation and the hope of all the ends of the earth. And on this day, in which we embark on our journey with this new county administration building, we would render to thee our tribute and praise for thy goodly heritage thou hast given us. We thank thee for fostering care and multiplied mercies, by which the little one has become a thousand, and the small one true and strong. And though for our many sins, thou hast sent heavenly judgment upon us, thy mercies endure forever. Our transgressions are ever before thee, and we implore forgiveness of thy hand and a continuance of thy loving kindness and mercy. May the cornerstone of this building here erected and dedicated to the service of the citizens of Pennington County be a place of public service now and for future generations, and may returning anniversaries find a grateful and prosperous heaven, blessed people, promoted to cherish the memory, and if need be, imitate the noble virtues and patriotic devotion of those who came before us. And may the supreme Grand Architect of the architecture ascribe praise and glory forevermore. Amen.
I have just a little bit more to say. First of all, I want to draw your attention to these pictures over here. This is the current courthouse. That was the first courthouse in the middle. And on the far end is a photo of the dedication of the cornerstone in nineteen twenty-two of our current courthouse. And it's really interesting to look, especially at the photo of the dedication. Things have changed. People would not be allowed to sit on top of columns and have their children on top with them. There's just, you can see some changes just in looking at it, but it's a great photo to look at. Well, there are just many, many thank yous today, and I tried to pick out the ones that I thought we needed to especially note. I want to thank the Grand Lodge of South Dakota and all the Masons, because there's many Masons in the audience who did not participate in the ceremony. I appreciate that they were willing to do this for us. And I really need to especially thank my son Jake, Jake Smith, who is a Mason and who organized and worked with us on this, and we just really appreciate it, Jake. I want to thank Jim Skoll Construction and their crew. You willingly changed your construction schedule, and you prepared the site for us so that we could do this, and I very much appreciate that. I want to thank Central State Fair, Ron Jeffries. They provided us with the staging, the seating, the P.A. system. We just really, really are thankful that we had access to that. We want to thank all of the Pennington County employees. Many of them helped here on-site today, but I don't want to forget those people who were, who had to stay back from the office, and they had to keep business going, and I appreciate that they did that. Special thank you to Holly Hennies, our Commission Office Administrator, and Mike Cool, our Building Project Manager, who handled so many details that kept us organized so we can enjoy today. I want to thank you all for participating in another historic moment for Pennington County. I was just mentioning to the commissioners, you know, in eighty-two years, which is the difference between the age of that cornerstone and this one, what will they be saying? I mean, we are part of history today, even though we don't think of that sometimes. And so in eighty-two years, will they be dedicating another cornerstone? We hope that you will join us later this year. We will have an open house of our new administrative building, and that should be great for everyone to come and see. I also would like to invite you back to the Commission Office. We are carefully set up, and you're welcome to join us in the Commission Meeting over soon again in a little while. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate all of you coming. We appreciate the ceremony and the historic moment. Have a great day.
We'll call the Pennington County Commission Meeting back to order, and the next item on the agenda is items from the auditor.
Good morning. Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. The first item I have before you is a transfer of a liquor license, Black Forest Inn, and its business name is Black Forest Inn. Owner name, Ink and Cindy, Inc., and it's being transferred to Black Forest Inn Bed and Breakfast Lodge, Inc., owner name, Black Forest Inn. All the fees have been paid. Application is attached.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we approve the transfer of the liquor license to the Black Forest Bed and Breakfast.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Does anyone have any comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, item B.
The next item is a special request for retail on-sale wine license and malt beverage retailer's license. This is to be issued to the Rapid City Area Chamber of Commerce for the location out at Hart Ranch for the June chamber mixers, specifically on June tenth, between five-thirty and seven-thirty. The application is attached, and this is just for a one-day event.
And do we have any questions or comments relative to this issue?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Again, I would make a motion to approve that one-day liquor license for the Rapid City Area Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item C.
The next item is the two thousand and fourteen current tax deed list that we need to have the commissioners declare as surplus for selling at our tax deed auction, which will be July twenty-third at ten a.m. in the morning. I would like to call your attention, before you do that, to page three, number thirteen oh eight. We're requesting that you determine if you want to set a minimum bid on this piece of property. As you can see, the assessed value is four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars, with back taxes of eighty thousand, nine hundred and forty-two. We are just started including the back taxes, so the board can see basically what the lots are valued at and what those back taxes are accumulating. There also are several lots in the Valley Heights Estate subdivision. They're roughly valued around ninety-nine hundred dollars, and they roughly have forty-five hundred dollars in back taxes on them.
What pages are those?
They start on page four, and they go through page, basically, page ten, partly on page ten. What we'd like is, is if the board has set minimum bids on some instances in the past, we have had tax deed sales where they have not set minimums, and we have had the commissioners pull off specific pieces of property if they want to sell it at an avenue other than the auction that we're having. To proceed with our process, we would like the board to at least declare the property surplus so we can proceed with the notifications, as well as notifying us if you want to set minimum bids, or if you want to think about it, and set those in two weeks.
So if I understand you correctly, we can split the decision so that we declare surplus today, and we evaluate things and determine yes or no on the minimum bid.
And also in two weeks, if you would like to determine specifically on that thirteen oh eight, on number, page three, if you want to hold that at a different time, and do it through bids, through the sealed bids or whatever, or we can definitely sell it at auction. Boards in the past have specifically looked at larger-valued pieces of properties to see if they want to set the minimum, so we at least get the taxes owed, so the previous buyer doesn't come in and buy it for cheaper than the taxes owed.
What's the wish of the commission?
Or you can set no minimum today, and we can proceed.
Mr. Chairman? I guess, I would probably prefer taking another, a longer look at this, but I see no reason why we shouldn't set the minimums of all of them for at least the amount of taxes that are owed on them. And I know some of them probably won't get sold for that amount.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to declare the property list as a surplus and schedule a date for a sale, or you've already scheduled a date.
You can reaffirm it for us, please.
To determine any minimums at the next Commission Meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All the information that we have on these properties are on our webpage, so if you want to look at those pictures at home, or we have the files in our office, if you want to see how the appraisal came in, what leans are against it, that type of information.
That's on your website?
Well, the county's, yeah.
But for the auditor's office?
Yeah. I think there's a special button, whatever it is on the web.
I'll find somebody that knows how to do it.
Yeah. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Not sure if we have anyone here for the next item, buildings and grounds.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Perhaps we could move that and take care of the contractual in executive session?
Okay. Are you saying you want to go into executive session now, or?
Yeah. Oh, he's coming? Okay.
All right. We'll be at ease for a moment.
If you need a cookie, this is a good time to get it.
Well, is it raining out? We can always talk about weather.
Well, you kind of lucked out on your ceremony.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, there are just a few drops at the end.
Yep.
Oh, way better. Yep, that's for sure.
I'll make a motion that we move fifteen up ahead of fourteen. Second.
Okay. Motion to go into executive session, or, or did you just want to move it?
Well, I, and after we move it, then I would make the motion.
All right. So, we have a motion to move fifteen up. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session. For purposes of contractual negotiation.
Motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion.
Motion to go out of executive session.
Second. Motion and a second to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I think we'll move to item sixteen to maintain some continuity with our executive session. So, Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to item sixteen, as you all know and the public's been aware of for some time, we've been working with in kind of a partnership, not contractually, but in a good-faith effort with the community health of Rapid City, Black Hills Community Health, and, and the Health and Human Services Department of Pennington County, to look for a new site to join in building one building that meets all of their needs, community health, and moving our Health and Human Services Department into that building. And we've had a little bit of money upfront involved in some of the initial drawings. That's already been spent. That was needed as one of the agreements we did have to work through Phase One, and that is to put up a little money each partner, if you will, look at designs and see if we want to move further than to actually build the building. It's, we've kind of agreed, if you will, at this point, that for financial reasons and otherwise, we're not going to proceed further. It's a mutual divorce, if you will, frankly, amongst the parties. We're probably better off going our own ways and doing our own separate building, or looking at some other arrangement to fulfill our space needs for Health and Human Services. So, the parties have very professionally come together and agreed that we're not going to pursue any further joint efforts to build a one unified building. We've also been guaranteed that there will be no further request for any money whatsoever, even though the, from Pennington County, even though some of the design work has been pursued further. And so, that was a, a good gesture on their part. We appreciate that, and at this time, I guess, just laying it out, we're, we're no longer pursuing a partnership or the construction of this joint building. So, I would leave it, I guess, to one of the commissioners if there's a motion at this point that you want.
Thank you, Jay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I would like to make a motion. We had had a motion before to have the Building Committee work with community health to, to try to find space for Health and Human Services. So, my motion would be to discontinue that effort in, in putting a joint plan together with community health for Health and Human Services, but also to direct the Building Committee to continue to work with Health and Human Services to come up with a plan for their space needs and bring it back to the board.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Yes.
I would just, I would just go on to say, for the public's information, we really had to get to this point in our discussions with health and, or with community health and the preliminary schematics to come up with what the cost of that building was going to be, and compare that cost with what the square footage cost is for a one-story building. And so, I, I don't think our efforts over the past number of months has been all for, for not, because I, some of the, some of the studies that we've done and some of the reviews that we've done can carry forward to this next phase of trying to find a space for Health and Human Services.
Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Jay. Now, we're back to item fourteen A. Mike?
Good morning. Mike Cool, Construction Project Managing, Manager, Buildings and Grounds. Construction progress on the administration building and the rest of the work on Block 99 has reached a point where it's necessary for us to execute another change order. This would be change order number five. I am, I have included with your information a copy of the, the draft change order, and I'm seeking BOC Committee, Committee, Commission authorization for this change order of $100,053.32, which would bring the contract total to $22,726,861.7, and increase the contract time by 23 days. I also attached a spreadsheet that shows how costs have been spread across the project overall. As you're aware, some of our past expenditures, utilizing some of the contingency money for which will pay for this change order, have, have also covered costs for design fees for our furniture planning efforts and such as well. So, currently, much of this change order is allocated to the administration building. It's actually just over $91,000. And that would bring our, our use of contingency money to about two, just under $300,000, leaving us with about $204,000 of contingency money for the administration building yet. If you have any questions, I'm.
Any questions, comments?
Mike, just a point of clarification for the public, that $22 million includes both the Evidence Energy Plant and the admin building.
That's correct. I apologize for that. It includes the evidence building, the administration building, and all the site work on, on the project. So, that is also, that, that includes enclosures on the parking structure around the stair towers as well.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one. You might want to change the date of substantial completion.
Oh, that's right.
We did catch that one. I, I do appreciate that.
So, you're showing?
It will be September 15th of 2014.
Commissioner Busker, are you saying that should be in the motion?
Oh, I suppose.
That way it'd be on record?
Imagine. Unless he wants to start paying penalty from a year ago.
It is on, it is corrected on the document.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to authorize the Chair's signature to change order number five dated May 14th, 2014, which increases the contract sum by $100,053.32 to a total of $22,726,861.7, and increases the contract time by 23 days for J. Skal Construction Services for the construction of the Pennington County Campus Expansion Project. And did you want the date in there, or is that okay?
It is corrected on the, on the original, yes.
Yep. Do we have a second to the motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a second. Further discussion? Any other comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Thank you. The second item is the furniture award of the furniture package. The commission actually awarded it at the last Commission meeting after the bids were After that, we went through and, and prepared the contracts based on the contract, the project documents, and I'm bringing those back to you today for authorization of the Chair's signature to those. That will, the contract value for this furniture package for the administration building will be $568,731.74.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I would move to authorize the Chair's signature to a contract with Dakota Typewriter Exchange doing business as the Dakota Business Center to provide and install furnishings as described in the Pennington County Administration Building Furniture and Equipment Package for $568,731.74.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
You had a busy day.
It has been busy.
Thanks for all your work, too.
Okay, now we're to item seventeen, Planning and Zoning.
Good morning. Dan Jensen, Pennington County Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. And before I continue, I'd just recommend, or we're, we're requesting that item A be removed for a correction to one of the conditions. So, item B is a Plan Unit Development Review 0607 for Black Hills Resorts, Inc. Simran Park is recommended to be continued to the June 17th Board of Commissioners meeting. Item C is the first reading and public hearing of Rezone 1402 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1402 for Chad Gulnick, and approval is recommended. Item D is a Minor Platt 1407 in Subdivision Regulation variance 1403 for Joyce Spentliff and Barbara Lee, and approval is recommended with waivers and exceptions.
Okay, so, to clarify, you're removing item A for separate consideration, or?
Yes, just to correct a, one of the conditions that needed some additional language added to it.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair? I'd make a motion that we pass the consent agenda, including items B, C, and D, excluding my, excluding item A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, do you want to do item A?
Yes. Item A is a Plan Unit Development Review 0501 for Mountain Meadows Resort, LLC, Richard and Catherine Fry, to review PUD to allow for a recreational resort campground and RV manufactured home seasonal resort. The reason it was pulled is actually condition number one. The last time it was reviewed, it had had added language in there, in that where it says the, that the applicant maintains the wastewater disposal system according to, and this is what's added, Pennington County On-Site Wastewater Ordinance, and to the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources Regulations. And that's the only change. So, I just recommend that condition number one be changed to add that language.
Okay, we need a motion to make the amendment.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the, I would make a motion to amend condition number one as presented after staff recommendation to be the same as, as the previous granting of, of the PUD in June of 2008 and July of 2011, where the Pennington County's On-Site Wastewater Ordinance was included.
And that's for PU 0501?
Correct.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to amend. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, the amended item A, any further discussion on that? If not, do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve PU 0501 as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we need another motion.
Well, actually, a request that we could discuss item K, which is the Appeal of Detail Communications Facilities Permit prior to the Board of Adjustment, because if that is not approved, there's no reason to approve the variance.
Item which?
J and K. We have both items, J and K, could be heard prior to the Board of Adjustment, because if those are not approved, either one of the variances would not be needed.
Is that acceptable to the board, to move to item J and K?
Sure. Okay, by me.
No objection from the board. We'll entertain item J.
Hello, PJ Conover, Assistant Director, Planning Department. Item J is a Minor Platt 1403 to reconfigure lot lines to create lots one and two in Silver City Edition Number Two. Applicant is John Donahue. He's also the landowner, surveyor, is Fisk Land Surveying, and is owned to suburban residential. The applicant is requesting a minor plat to reconfigure lot lines for three existing lots, and Dan, if you could forward that a little bit, I'm going to leave the podium so I can kind of explain it. Keep going, right? One more.
So, essentially, what they're looking to do, right now, this line here is for this property owned by Robert Joyce, and from here all the way over is owned by John Donahue. What they're looking to do is just reconfigure this lot line to here. They're not increasing the size, they're not increasing. the size, they're not increasing density, it's going to create a point-two-nine acre lot from here for Robert Joyce, and decrease the size of this lot down to point-six-one acres. These would actually be two of the larger lots in Silver City if they were, if it was approved.
The applicant, and who would be the, also the, is also the owner of lot two, track A there, Mr. John Donahue, is aware that because of the size of that proposed lot, a traditional onsite wastewater treatment system would not be acceptable, and that a whole attack would most likely be needed. Now, on track A, as we're looking at here, there are, there are no structures on there at all right now, and as, as far as I know, there are, there's nothing planned in the future. On lot one to the left, there's a house, there's also a shed, there's an onsite wastewater treatment system and a well, and both lots right now, well, lot one right now is legal non-conforming lot with no violations. This minor plat has been heard before this committee, this commission before. The item that has been holding it up, and I'm going to leave the podium again.
Is a four-point-five by three-point-eight square foot outhouse shape, structure or a shed. It has been shown by two different surveying companies that it is directly over the property of John Donahue and his neighbor Beverly Sears. And Mr. Donahue has been trying to work through Fisc Land Surveying with his neighbor to resolve this issue, and as of today, the structure, actually, yesterday, the structure is still there, but Mr. Donahue has applied for a zero-foot setback variance for his half of that shed, and that will be heard before the Board of Adjustment on June sixth.
If staff recommends approval of the minor plat fourteen-zero-three, we have four conditions, and one of those, number three, addresses the structure over the lot lines.
So who, who's the shed belong to?
Beverly Sears, the neighbor.
And, and by making lot one larger, does that, and it was a legal non-conforming, by making the lot bigger, does that then require them to bring that into compliance? Are they aware of that?
Yes.
What will they have to do to become compliant?
On lot one?
Yep.
They'll be required to get a variance.
Well, that's, I believe that's what we're hearing after this. If this gets, if this gets approved, the request for lot size variance follows this.
We're taking two legal non-conforming lots and just changing the arrangement a little bit into two legal non-conforming lots?
Yes. That happens quite often in the community of Silver City, as you're aware, and those lots you can see just to the north, and those lots are all about twenty-five feet by a hundred feet long, and that's pretty typical of old communities that were plotted back in the eighteen hundreds. A lot of times, they took a number of lots, as you can see, the lot to the left was two small lots, and now he's actually making it about, equivalent to about four and a half lots that were planted way back. And they're actually making that larger, which brings it closer to being brought into compliance, but still doesn't mean to refer to our zoning ordinance, and that's why they're requesting a variance. In addition, in order to proceed with the plot.
If we approve this, and then we go into the variance to give half of, his half of the shed a zero, what's that, what's going to happen? We're going to go out and saw it in half? Is he going to saw it in half, or?
But if the variance is granted, he would stay on the property.
Well, his half.
Right.
Not her half.
Her half, this is grandfathered. She doesn't require anything unless she adds on to the, her craft.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Clarify the issue for the public and on the record. This used to be an outhouse, but it's no longer being used for an outhouse, it's now a storage shed. Is that correct?
It's supposed to be.
I think we've.
Where the basement?
I think, I think to reiterate what the director said, it's supposed to be used as a storage shed. Staff was out, it so happens that Beverly Sears' conditional use permit for the playhouse that she has on the property is up for review, and as part of that, addressing that structure is part of the review. Staff was out onsite yesterday. We were given permission by Ms. Sears to look into the outhouse. There were a bunch of items that staff had removed. The staff peered down into the, through the seat, there was, he didn't have a flashlight, he saw what appeared to be a piece of wood, like a beam going across, but he didn't have a flashlight, and so staff has to go out again with a flashlight to verify if the hole is filled in or not.
It did appear that it's not being used.
Yes. There was dust, and he said things looked like they had been in their place for a long time. It may just be a fact that the hole's not filled in.
So when the, when, and this is a, this is Sears property, but when that, conditional use for the playhouse was granted, was this, was that other building addressed in that, in the conditions on that?
At that time, we weren't aware it was across the property line, however, it would still have been grandfathered in. We did look into, or we got pictures of the shed showing that it was being used as storage, and there was stuff stacked on top, you couldn't even see the bench, so at that time, it appeared that it was filled in.
The condition on that staff report was to remove it or fill in the hole.
The additional correspondence that you provided us with, let's see, dated January twenty-fourth, January twenty-second, January fifteenth, correspondence. So, at one point, there was confusion over the legal description, or is a lot line deal, has that been cleared up?
Over the legal description?
Well, in, on the twenty-fourth, it says, "I apologize for the confusion I created on the matter. I did have the wrong property listed in my last letter."
I'm trying to find a copy of that, I think I may have given all mine away. Yes, please, thank you. Mr. Commissioner, which letter are you on again? January twenty-fourth?
Yes.
I'm looking for the part of that where it says. Received, is this the letter from our ordinance officer?
Yes.
Okay. Wrong property listed. I believe that has been taken care of since then, letters have come after that.
Guess I'm kind of wondering if the traditions of Halloween have changed so much that.
You're saying we wait till Halloween, we can move it half, half the length of it, or?
Sometimes the old things work, but. Anyway, what's the wish of the commission?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minor plat with, how many?
Four.
Four? Well, what was the one I saw that had included that before filing the minor plat, the shed has to be moved?
Or a variance.
And that's the variance one?
Yes, or a variance be obtained for a zero-foot setback.
Yep, would you like me to read it?
No.
Okay. And the variance, he is already.
The minor plat, you just have the four conditions.
Correct.
Is Secretary comfortable with the wording in the motion?
Well, now, just a second, because one of the recommendations is prior to the county board approval of the minor plat, a lot size variance be obtained for the proposed lot.
Which will also be heard today on Halloween for lot one and two.
But this says prior.
This is prior, yep, that's a good point.
You could change that to just clear things up, prior to filing the minor plat, a lot size variance be obtained.
The same probably for number one.
Okay, let's be clear now, so that we've got this right. We need a motion to amend the staff recommendations, is that correct?
Correct.
And what should that amendment, how should that amendment be worded?
Changing number one to prior to filing the minor plat, so taking out, instead of that, prior to county board approval of minor plat, just prior to filing the minor plat. And also, in that portion of the sentence for number two, the same words, instead of that, prior to county board approval of the minor plat, be prior to filing the minor plat.
You wish to include that in your motion, or?
Yes, I do.
No, it'll be fun, Laurie.
Are you okay with that?
I, I believe I am. One and two, changing the approval to filing.
And I believe we also need to do three.
Yep.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the staff recommendations on item J. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, now item J as amended. What's your wish?
I'll make a motion to approve it as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, item J has been completed, where do we go next?
Item K.
Item K, okay.
Item K is a telecommunications facility permit TC fourteen-zero-one, originally to allow a hundred-and-ninety-foot stealth monopine pole and equipment shelter in a general agricultural district. The applicant is Verizon Wireless with the agent John Rowe, who is in the audience today. The owner is Joseph Theberg. It is zoned general agriculture district, however, the size, against a legal non-conforming lot of four-point-nine-four acres, where forty acres usually the minimum. Updated purpose of this report, again, this was heard before the Planning Commission on May twelfth, it was denied, and the applicant filed for an appeal on May thirteenth. During that time, the applicant has changed the proposal to allow a hundred-and-six, and this was also heard by the Planning Commission, the applicant has changed it to allow a hundred-and-sixty-five-foot stealth monopine pole plus the twelve-by-thirty structure on the property. Again, this is a change from the hundred-and-ninety-foot pole. And these are based on a conversation that the applicant has had with the Planning Commission, items he has heard from concerned neighbors, and that was back in April. This is the applicant's second attempt to have a communication tower on the subject property. In two thousand and eight, the conditional use permit zero-eight-sixteen failed via vote of the Planning Commission, and again failed under appeal by the Board of Commissioners, mainly due to the aesthetics of the, of the tower and also its location. And there are two other stealth monopine towers in the county. There is a hundred-and-four-foot stealth monopine on Big Ben Road and a hundred-and-five-foot stealth monopine on Sheridan Lake Road.
But what are they disguised with?
They're monopines, they look like.
Yes, I realize, I realize that, but the monopines that you're saying that there are two others in the county are within other pine trees and in the hills, and.
Yes, we actually have a picture of one. This is the site, the proposed site, and that is an artist's rendition of what the current tower, I believe the applicant has another proposal, what the current tower would look like. That is the site now, next one should show the tree. If you go further on, this is coverage, we can get into that, that's the one on Sheridan Lake Road. Again, originally, it was just a, a telecommunications tower. From the two thousand and eight meetings, it was recommended that it be disguised in some time for aesthetics with camouflage, and so that is what the applicant has come back with. Because of a tower of this site and the setback requirements for telecommunications towers, it's one-point-one times the tower height, which would be a hundred-and-eighty-one feet. For the four property lines that this tower would be on, again, at a hundred-and-sixty-five foot, if it was to break at the base and fall, it would only cross, there are no issues to the north, east, or south property lines, but it would fall over the west approximately a hundred feet over the property line onto the adjoining property, which is a twenty-nine-plus-acre general commercial lot. However, that is also owned by the same owner of the subject property that the tower is being proposed on. The applicant has talked with Sabre Industries and a design engineer, Robert Beacom, and they have designed the tower that if it fails due to wind or ice, that it would, I'm not exactly sure of the technical part of it, but basically that if it was to break, it would fall within fifty-five feet of the tower, which is well within the hundred-and-eighty-one-foot setback. Because of the west, because of the tower, if it breaks at the base, not meeting the one-point-one times setback requirement for the county, there is a variance that would be heard after this, if this was approved, that has already been applied for. There's more. There are items to consider while looking at locations for the tower, type of terrain, the presence of trees, and the existing natural features, use of colors and materials from the surrounding area, FAA requirements, and new stealth designs. The staff's feeling that the applicant has met all but one of these considerations, and that being number two, the presence of trees or other existing natural features to shield or block the view angles. The closest trees are over two-hundred feet away to the east. There's also a list of priorities as far as sites where the county would like telecommunications towers to be in, right, there are, number one, the highest, number five, the lowest. Right now, this is, this is proposed on a number four priority site, and it's a general commercial, I'm sorry, which is a general agriculture, which is again, usually a forty-acre minimum, and this is a legal non-conforming four-point-nine-four-acre site. As I mentioned earlier, directly to the west is a twenty-nine-plus-acre, I believe it's twenty-nine, general commercial lot, also owned by the applicant, which may be a more desirable site, and it is actually a higher priority site than the one being proposed. The applicant appears to meet all design requirements for our ordinances with, with the following exception, that when feasible, a facility shall be sighted so that at least eighty percent of the height of the tower and accompanying structures are screened by view by vegetation. As the interpretation of the director of the Pennington County Planning Department, and I'm in concurrence, that vegetation is live plants, not the faux foliage that would be on the tower, however, it could still be up for interpretation. The staff is recommending denial of telecommunications facility permit fourteen-zero-seven. If the Planning Commission does choose to approve the stated permit for the hundred-and-sixty-five-foot stealth monopine, we recommend you add eleven conditions.
Mr. Chair, I, I guess I was, I, I read some comments about safety, and I didn't hear that addressed in any of the comments, that they use this area for landing helicopters, the medical helicopters, and so on. You didn't address that in your comments to us, or?
No, I was trying, because it was an appeal, trying just basically of the same presentation I gave at the Planning Commission. That was brought up after.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Nancy, are you done?
Yep.
I just want to bring up some things, and that's, that's exactly one of the things I was going to bring up, is the fire department for Johnson site, and you're directly across the road from this site. And I know that that parking lot has been used on occasions for helicopter landing for rescue or lifelight to Rapid City Regional Hospital. Also, this site is directly on the highway that's designated by the state of South Dakota as a scenic highway. I don't think that pertains much to scenic, and adds much view to it as being a scenic highway, and I think it's Korean, Korean War scenic highway is what the state designated that road as. And I think it's a very bad place to set a precedence to have something like this, and I think it needs to go somewhere else. And I think it's a very bad place to set a precedence to have something like this, and I think it needs to go somewhere else.
The applicant is here if you'd like to speak.
Any other comments?
I'd be interested, I mean, you had mentioned that there is a secondary location that would be a number five in our classification of sites?
Actually, number three. Right now, it's at a number four priority, which is a general agriculture, which again is 40 acres minimum, usually the one above that, number three is general commercial.
Okay.
And as far as additional sites, during the last meeting, the applicant has, and we can pull it up for you, alternatives within the area.
Okay, I guess it may be the applicant can go over that with us.
Is there, do you wish to comment on this, sir? Yeah. Would you come forward, please?
Thank you. My name's John Rowe. I work for Buell Consulting, St. Paul, Minnesota, and we represent Verizon Wireless. First thing I wanted to point out is I was just looking at a staff report about the comments of the county fire coordinator, and, you know, they mentioned issues about setbacks, but they don't say anything about this being in the way of a helicopter pad landing, although I have heard those come up from other people. We started this in 2008 before the ordinance for towers came in and, and, and basically were, from that point, invested in this particular site. And since then, the site got on hold. Verizon bought Altel and then divested it to AT&amp;T, and, and it just, it just, originally, we were, the goal was to serve all of Highway 44 from Canyon Lake up to 385. And now, we've done a lot of that. Well, not maybe half of it, but a good piece of it. And that being that there is a, a site up on 385 and 44. AT&amp;T has co-located on that, so both, both companies are on that site. AT&amp;T came along and, and built this short tower a couple miles or halfway from our proposed site. There, to where it says the existing Big Ben site is, it just goes a little bit above the trees and it's, it's high on a hill, so it has the advantage of being up on a hill. They built that site and Verizon co-located on it with AT&amp;T. The site that's down at the bottom of the hill there at Canyon Lake, that we call Foghorn-Clegg Horn, is a, a site that we got permitted from the city, and then AT&amp;T came along and co-located on it. So we're all co-locating on each other's towers. We're not applying for the same tower at the same time or anything like this, but at least you can see there's some cooperation. Some people have commented that, oh, they've got AT&amp;T service and their coverage exists in this gap area. Could you show the, the, yeah, that next one? Right there, yeah. The proposed site is, 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 you know, it's in this area, and the search ring that's on another page, I don't want you to move, please, but just to leave on that stage, covers, you know, means that we need to have a site in that area. We can't have a site out here, or a site down here, or a site over here that's going to cover this area effectively. There would need to be a site in that area. And so that's one of the reasons that we have a site located in that area. But, and I get some coverage through there, and, and, I mean, I, I can get a signal, and people on AT&amp;T say they can get a signal through there, but I tell you, it's not a reason, a reliable signal. It's not a signal that will last for a long time. It, it's not a signal that will always be present. It's not, when we designed this, and, and these coverage gaps or, or these coverage maps show where the quality of signal is what Verizon believes it should be, not just because they think that, but because they've done the customer, you know, satisfaction surveys and so forth, and well, what is the, you know, really the acceptable level of the quality of the service? So, some of the folks that say they have AT&amp;T over there, and so we don't really need this because they don't use Verizon, for instance, I, I just have to, you know, it brings me to the Telecom Act of 1996 that directs jurisdictions not to discriminate against, against carriers by not allowing all to have the same equivalent service. So at least to the point that somebody brings that up, I have to, you know, come back and say, if you think that it's okay for AT&amp;T to have a better service than, than Verizon, I, I beg to differ, and we could deal with that at another time. So in the meantime, that this site was on hold, and we have this coverage, and we have these co-locations, and, and we've co-located on each other, and, and talked about how that there may be some coverage, but it's not reliable. And I know it's common for the public to want to suffer. They want to, the, you know, the public wants to suffer by going, "We want service. We don't have it," before they get a new, a new site. And I'm sorry, but the company wants to provide the service before, before the public realizes that they need the service, because it takes a long time. It takes at least a year to go through all the processes that include compliance with the Federal Communications Commission's application of the Natural Environmental Protection Act of 69. And it's only been 10 or 12 years since they actually have people at the FCC who oversee environmental protection on every one of these sites. And that's one of the things that takes six months out of the year that, that it takes for us to develop a site.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for this gentleman.
Yes.
You, on your map, it shows that you're co-located with AT&amp;T at Big Ben site and also at the Clayhorn, Foghorn-Clegg Horn site.
Yes.
Does, does AT&amp;T have anything in between those two?
No.
Are, are they proposing to go on your site with you?
I, I don't, I'm not aware of any of that conversation, but that doesn't usually occur before you have a site to offer.
All right, and, and staff had, had mentioned you've got an alternative location.
Yes, we could show these, these other locations in the general immediate area. If, if the staff would bring up the, the other, I don't know if it's in the bottom. The, the one that shows the three different sites on The Burgess Land.
They're on The Burgess.
Here. As I said, you know, we're invested in the site that we operated with, and I know that we've been denied, and I, I would say that, you know, America, the inspiration of America is about failing to succeed. And I've learned a lot in this process. As, as staff mentioned, we, we reduced the tower height to resolve some of the issues with setbacks and so forth, and we had the tower redesigned. I might state about, it seemed a little confusing about the, the redesign of the tower. To say that it would fall at the base is to say that it would fall like a tree.
If I could redirect you to the, your options, I'm, that's what I'm interested in.
Sure, I'm sorry. This, this one was a location that we had some trees in front, and it's farther back from the road, and it's really farther, well, it's farther from this house. I mean, this would be the closest house to Crawford House. And you can see that, that there's a thick line of trees between the house itself and where this, this site might be located. It wasn't available to us originally. The landowner preferred that it go over here on his different lands. And now, after all this time, he's like, oh, well, you know, wherever, if you can get it approved here, or, or this was another location. And I didn't particularly think this was any better, although it had more screening from the road from all, all the trees in the house here, but it's definitely closer to the other homes, and it's not in a commercial, so it doesn't raise us to the next priority level of type of property, property that staff mentioned. Whereas this property used to be an old, it was a sawmill years ago. It was industrial.
The.
And now it's commercial.
The option number three, then.
Yes.
Does that set up on a hill, or I can't tell?
No, it's relatively same elevation. It's just, you know, a longer way to build a road and, and bring in utilities, and it has some trees in front of it.
Where's the fire department from there?
The fire department's over here.
So it's further away from the fire department?
Definitely. It's amongst the trees. And to, you know, as much as we can get without going downhill, because you go south from there, it's a big ravine. So it's, it's relatively level to these other properties. I, and it resolves setback issues. It would not require a setback, and then it would move us up to a, a higher priority. And I, you know, I come in here still, you know, after, after being denied from the planning commission or recommend, or recommendation is, is to at least suggest that, it didn't have to be true, but I, that wherever we go, there's always somebody to complain. And we go where people are. We don't build sites in the middle of the desert where there aren't anybody. We serve the people, and we need to have a site that's basically out in this area, and there's lots of very nice homes on, on both sides of the road, and the best I can do is try to get away from them. And certainly, I would come back, you know, with an application for this site, you know, if you deny me again today. But at least I want to present, present this, and then, you know, getting input. Input, I asked for input last time from the planning commission and from the public, and I haven't heard any input from the county board. I haven't been to the county board with this in six years.
Well, at least for me, I would think option three would be much better than option one or option two, or your current location or option two. It gets it away from the fire station, which Commissioner Davis pointed out was an issue, and, and looks to me like it gets it further away from the buildings.
Mr. Chair.
The only thing I would add is that there, you do have a photo of a, of a tower that, I, I went back and I looked at some of these photos that we had provided already, and I realized that we made a mistake. And this is what I say about failing to succeed, is, is getting it a little better the next time, is that we didn't propose, yeah, that picture. We didn't propose a, a tree where the branches went down almost all the way to the building. And here, I think that you can see that this tree really looks a lot more like a tree than a tree where, you know, the pole starts this high, and then you see the rest below that. That's all you say is, is tree. And.
I, I like those better than the red and white towers that have around Rapid City.
Mr. Chair, first of all, this is the wrong place for it. There's nothing around it to shield it in the place, the original application place for, for The Burgess property. I don't care, I don't care what it looks like. 199-foot tall, or 165, or 185, or whatever it might be, is not the place next to that area where it could be interrupting the public safety. And also, it, it's not a thing that beautifies a scenic highway, and that's what scenic highways are all about, is to make them an area that people like to drive through and like to see the scenery around them. You mentioned earlier about the property over there, where item three is, was a heavy industrial at one time. You bet it was. But before I went off the county commission four years ago, I saw to it that it was changed so we wouldn't wind up with a junkyard there or a cement plant, which I have nothing against cement plants, but in the right places. But that's, that's why it's got changed to commercial. And so I just can't for the life of me understand why we would put some one lone pine tree, whatever it looks like, whether it looks like that, or a pole that's 60 feet high before you get to a tree limb on that scenic highway. It's just not the place for it. And I have one other, one other question I'd like to ask the gentleman. I believe in the planning, the planning commission meeting, the first one, there was mention that there was a place over on Falling Rock. Did you go over there and check that one out?
Yeah, I did. I went over there, and I asked the RF engineer, and, and he indicated it was just too far, like about over here. It's just too far in that direction to the west. And the reason that these sites need to be where the gap is, is because if they move too much in one direction or another, they do, they do too much to duplicate what another site already does. And the fact that even putting it in the middle, there is some duplication in between, but when you start getting to the point where your new site is duplicating 50 or 60% of what another site already does, you're not even going to build it. It's just not effective.
So, so what we're saying is that we don't want to duplicate services. So we want to put this in the way of public beauty and public safety, and that's not the thing for it.
We do, we do the best we can, and, and what I had to work with is what we were invested with in 1908, or 9, 9, I'm sorry, 2008. And, you know, now, I mean, at least I have the benefit of being through these meetings to come back with an application that's a little more in the trees. I, I've tried other choices I couldn't even negotiate, and, and that we don't bring up here today to save your time. But, but I come back with the benefit of having been to these past couple planning commission meetings and your meeting, and, and hearing what I've heard, to, to try to propose and put our best foot forward in the next application.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I just have a few. I, I know, I mean, I use cell phone as much as anybody. This is the Black Hills. We're not going to have cell phone service on every mile of every road in the Black Hills unless we put a, a 150-foot tree every mile or two. I'm sorry, there are places in the Black Hills, you shouldn't build houses. There are places in the Black Hills, you just may not get phone service. And that's why, part of the reason we live here. I use them as much as anybody, but, and it aggravates the heck out of me when I lose service. But it, you know, it's, it's one of those things of living where we do, I, I guess. And I'll tell you, there's, I would rather have a straight pole sticking up than a stupid-looking tree. That, that, I mean, they are, they gotta be a laughing stock of anybody who drives by and looks at them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to, to uphold the planning commission's recommendation of denial.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Anything further? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Did you vote no?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so it's four to one. Okay, now we are ready for Board of Adjustment. Do we need, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Motion and a second to convene as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item E.
Item E is a variance request 1406 to reduce the minimum required lot size from 1 acre to .29 and .61 acres in a suburban residential district in Silver City. The applicant is John Donahue, surveying, is fistland surveying, and an additional owner is Robert Joyce. This was previously heard at this meeting, so I'll just go over the highlights again, that the applicant is requesting a lot size variance to allow .61 and .29 acres in suburban residential district. And I'm going to, would you like me to show again on the screen? No? Okay. The additional item issue with this lot, again, is the shed and outhouse-shaped structure over the lot line, which again will be addressed later. If the county Board of Adjustment approves variance 1406 to reduce the minimum lot size requirements for the two lots, we recommend you do so with two conditions.
With how many conditions?
Two.
Where, where do I get the 15 conditions?
Are you on variance 1406?
Are you on the plat?
You might be on the minor plat.
I can't pick it up here.
Well, my item E it says.
Uh, you're in the staff report, I believe, and there's 15 conditions.
From previous.
Yeah.
Staff report, yep.
Is that, are you on page two of the staff report?
Here it is, right here.
It just laid out basically the procedure they had to go through for the layout and minor plats.
Says.
What are the two conditions?
The two conditions, would you like me to read them to you?
Yeah, please.
Condition number one is that prior to county approval, the count, the outhouse partially located on proposed lot two be removed, or a variance be obtained for the setbacks in the formerly dedicated minor drainage and utility easements on the plat for tract A be vacated where the outhouse is located with a note on the plat. And that the property address, the property addresses for proposed lot one and proposed lot two of the Silver City addition number two in Silver City be clearly and continuously posted per Pennington County Ordinance Number 20.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, sorry, Janelle.
Should you?
Well, Dan says we don't need to. Question was about rewording condition number one.
Yeah, that's.
Similar to the last one, and Dan, did you want to speak to that?
It says, prior to county board approval, the out house partially located on proposed lot two be removed, or a variance be obtained for the setbacks. So, but you could go ahead, well.
That's my.
Okay, yeah. You could reword it in a way that prior to filing the plat, let's see. Why don't we just do that, just change it just like we did the other ones? Yep. I'll be the, prior to filing the plat with registered deeds, the out house partially located on proposed lot two be removed, or a variance be obtained for the setbacks in formerly dedicated minor drainage and utility easements on the plat for track A be vacated where the out house is located with a note on the plat.
So, Mr. Chair, we need to have an amendment motion first? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So, I would move to amend the first condition of VA 1406 to read that prior to the filing of the plat, and remove that prior to county board approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
So, we, we haven't, if we approve this, all we're approving is the lot sizes.
Yes.
And we have, we haven't looked at the variance for the setback yet.
That'll be coming June 6th.
It's gotta come someday.
On the 6th, they've already filed, uh, yeah, submitted their application for that variance.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the staff report, the requirements. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we have an amended report. What's your wish in that regard?
I make a motion to approve it as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve variance 14, 1406 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item F. That ties back to item K.
My apologies. The Board of Commissioners have approved to uphold the denial of the telecommunications permit, which is item K, and therefore, staff believes that item F does not need to be heard.
They still have to wait for, uh, deny a staff motion.
Okay. Would you like me to go over it all?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did the applicant have to pay an application fee for this variance to not be really heard?
I didn't know it wasn't going to be heard.
I realized that, but now.
The applicant did submit the normal fees to proceed with a variance request, and it was advertised and publicized in the paper, so you do have to move ahead with a motion to deny this because it's, well, now it's no longer needed because the telecommunications permit is no longer going to be, or was denied for this site.
Okay.
Could we deny that without prejudice and transfer it to his other site if he's coming back with item three or not?
It's, it has, it's advertised for a specific property, so if he needs another variance, he needs to completely submit a new application.
Got you. I make a motion to deny variance VA 14-07.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to deny 1407. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item G.
Item G is a variance request 1409 for Richard Heeling. This is to reduce the minimum required front yard setback along the north property line from 25 feet to 20 feet in a general ag district, and to allow a manufactured home to be located within the 65 to 70 noise zone of the Ellsworth Air Force Installation Compatibility Use Zone. If the county board approves it, we'd recommend that five conditions be attached. This was continued from the last county board meeting in order to look into seeing what the Ellsworth Development Authority had to say in regards to this being located in that noise contour zone. And as you can see in the update, we did contact Glenn Kane, who's the current acting president of the, let me make sure I get that right. The managing director of the South Dakota Ellsworth Development Authority, and he indicated that the, based upon the model year of the manufactured home and how it would have been insulated and built, it would meet the noise attenuation requirements to be compatible with that 65 to 70 noise zone. So, if you approve this variance, we'd recommend that those five conditions be attached, which one of the conditions is, is that he's signing a statement and file that statement with registered deeds, showing that he's aware he's living in this noise level zone and of the hazards, the possible hazards of living in that area.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the variance 1409 as recommended by the staff with those conditions. I shouldn't say recommended, but as stated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item H, sorry. Item H is a variance request 1414 for Joyce Bentliff to reduce the minimum required lot size from 10 acres to three acres in a limited ag zoning district. If the variance is approved, staff would recommend that no conditions be attached. This is located between Keystone and Hill City on Old Hill City Road at 12853 Old Hill City Road, approximately two miles west of Keystone. The reason this applicant is requesting this variance request, they'd like to reconfiguring, reconfigure the lot lines of one of the lots within their property, can't get it to work. So, I'll go up to the board. This is the lot they'd like to reconfigure in regards to, where it's currently about a three-acre lot. They're trying to change the lot line from, from this configuration to like this, and then include an area right in here for, for purposes of what they say they'd like to clarify some issues they've had with, in regards to this access road, and create a reserve area for their drain field in this area right here. It's actually just changing lot lines and not trying to increase density. This plat was done about four, five years ago, creating this lot for members of the family. Now they're just trying to clarify or clear up some issues in regards to that access road, and create an alternative drain field site for the existing house that's already located on this property. You can see some smaller lots. Those are lots that were put on there prior to 1994 and they're grandfathered in. They had recently, when they plotted this back in '04, I believe it is, they had gotten a lot size variance for that three-acre lot. Now they're just trying to change the lot lines to clarify some issues.
So, do they, do they own those small, those small lots as well?
Yes. They own, everything that's in red, that is currently what they own.
And, and will, will the changing of the lot lines change that smaller squared one?
No, that's, that's actually not part of this plat.
And, and is there houses on those small ones?
I believe there are homes on those smaller lots, and there's a home on that existing three-acre lot, too, which they're changing the lot lines.
And how, how, how big are those small lots?
I believe right around an acre, exactly an acre. So, again, they're not increasing density. They're just trying to reconfigure the lot line that they plotted back, and I believe in '04.
So, Dan, if I remember this correctly, the reason that we pulled off that little square right there was to allow a family member to build? And my understanding was they had purchased that property, but that's not true, the...
No, I understood that they owned all of that previously. Is that correct?
Okay.
Come up to the microphone, please.
Okay.
The property was, excuse me, my name is Quentin Riggins. I'm an attorney with Gunderson Palmer. I represent the applicants. The property was originally owned by my client's mother, and the original house had been on the property for many, many years. When she passed away, the family wanted to, to zone out or to create a lot for that existing home so that it could be sold to a family member. So, there wasn't any new construction. It was just creating a lot around the existing home that was there. There are three homes on the property. There's the home that's on the lot that we're dealing with here today, and there are two additional homes owned by my client and her sister that are also on the larger parcel of property. Those lots, I believe, were plotted out in the 70s. They have been in existence for quite some time. The only reason for reconfiguring the existing lot is to ensure that the entire portion of the access road is located in the majority, larger portion of the property, and to take it out of the existing lot, also it will create space for an additional drain field.
Okay, now I remember. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve item H of VA 1414, Joyce Bentliff, as requested.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve item VA 1414. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item I.
Item I is a variance request 1415 for Ronald Plender. This is to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to 2.74 acres in a general ag district. If the variance is approved, staff would not recommend any conditions be attached. This is located at 15543 226th Street, approximately five miles east of Box Elder, and one half-mile west of the intersection of 156th Avenue and 226th Street. Current, the applicant is requesting a 2.74-acre parcel. They have indicated the reason to request this lot size variance, they'd like to separate this from their, their ranch in the area. It currently is on a 40-acre parcel, and they'd like to separate the existing house and shop building from that 40 acres so they could retain ownership of that 40 acres, and then sell off this house and shop from the rest. They currently own 340 acres in the, 348 acres in the area. It is currently three parcels. One is 276 acres. Another is 32.5, which is the main ranch to the north, and then this 40-acre parcel, which this parcel would come out of. If this is approved and the plat goes through, they would take the balance of that 40 acres and add it to that 276 acres. It is within the three-mile plating jurisdiction of Box Elder, so it would be plotted through them and not through us. There are a number of other lots in the area, as you can see in my, this drawing, or the graphics up on the wall. There's other variances that have been approved in the area. Typically, variances in this area on ranchland, they're granted if there's financing available or they're separating it for children that are trying to obtain financing. This is not the case. They just want to create a separate parcel to sell it off from the other ranch or from the balance of their property. That's all I have to say.
Any questions or comments? Are you part of this issue? If you have anything to say, come up and state your name, and if not...
My name is Ronald Plender, and this home, years ago, probably in '04, maybe, I sold that 40 acres to my sister who moved out here, decided that, from California, decided that she wanted to live in South Dakota. That didn't last very long, and so I bought it back, and it was fortuitous in one way because we were able to move my wife's parents in there, and they lived there the last six years of their life. And really, the reason that we're wanting to sell it, but we did have an agreement to, we have a, a small mortgage that we would like to get paid off when we had to buy that back. So, there is some financial, but there's just a lot of tough memories for my wife with, she was their primary caregiver for all time. And I don't know that we see it here. We really didn't want to sell the 40 acres again because of the wetlands that, may I step over here?
Sure.
We have a nice stock dam down here for our pasturing, and we rent that pasture out, but it's all fed by these wetlands that come down here. And I was just, when my sister was there, they didn't care. It was just, they just wanted a place to live. I would be concerned about losing control over, if you will, because the wetlands start clear up here on our other property and come across to feed the stock dam. I don't know if this could become an issue if we sold the 40 acres. We chose the 2.747 acres. I actually came to the planning committee and said, does it make a difference what size is there if we were going to ask for a variance? They said it didn't seem like, if you're going to get a variance, you're going to get a variance. So, we just used some natural boundaries, and that's how we ended up with that hot size.
Any questions or comments from the commission? I'd make a motion to approve the variance it has presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Very, very complete explanation.
Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Now we have a, another motion we need.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item L.
Item L is the first reading and public hearing of ordinance amendment 1402. Rich Jensen and Corey Bruning. This is to amend section 210B regarding highway service districts to add medical facilities as an allowed use in that zoning district. Planning Commission recommended approval of this ordinance amendment. This came about when we were trying, or we were doing a conditional use permit for a lighted sign regarding a chiropractic office located at the Fitness Center on Sheridan Lake Road. As we were reviewing it, we came to realize that the chiropractic clinic is actually, is not an allowed use in that zoning district. It had been there for a number of years. We actually continued the conditional use permit for the lighted sign until this ordinance amendment, if approved, is, gets approved, and is allowed to actually have it in that zoning district. And then we also got a phone call from another gentleman, Mr. Jensen, regarding some property at Three Forks, where they were looking to sell a piece of property to somebody who wanted to put a dental clinic on this lot. Again, as we reviewed the ordinance, we realized it's not an allowed use in a highway service. It is an allowed use in general commercial district, and so in order to allow that use, we have to do an ordinance amendment to actually allow it. And upon review, we indicated it's not that much different than a lot of uses that are already allowed in highway service. As you can see, I listed a number of them that are actually consistent, and realized that it could be a use that is allowed in there. Planning Commission also reviewed it, indicated they felt it was appropriate for that zoning district, and recommended approval, along with staff's recommendation to approve this ordinance amendment also. ordinance amendment also.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading and public hearing of ordinance amendment OA 14-01.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, as I said in the planning commission, I can't tell you how many times I've been driving down the highway and wanting to stop and get my tooth filled.
Is that because your short-term memory is now working?
I think a masochist. Anyway, I think it's probably appropriate nowadays, chiropractic clinic, Three Forks for a dentist, you know, there's, the population is moving out from cities, and I guess they need some of this stuff too.
Probably not any more unlikely than getting a hearing aid or moving a glasses while you're driving down the highway. I think you really meant 1401, or 02, and said 01.
Well, I got, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I am ahead at M already, it's 1402, excuse me.
Well, with that computer, you're much faster than...
So, just as a matter of information, Rich Jensen and Corey Bruning applied for this amendment?
Together, yes. We were aware...
Did they pay a fee?
Yes, they did. They shared the cost of the fee.
It's interesting that citizens would have to pay a fee to do that. But, be that as may, I just wanted to point it out that we're legislating, and you don't have to pay to put a bill in here.
So...
Anyway, we have a...
What's the fee for?
What?
What's the fee paid for?
The fee costs, or covers the cost of legal advertising, because it does have to be advertised in the three local papers, and then also staff's time to research and write the staff report.
Had they just come in and said, "Hey, you got a void in your ordinance," would have you guys moved forward with this, because it sounds pretty logical?
That, we would have requested that, they come before the county board, and the county board direct us to do so.
So that would have been their option.
Well, the other thing is that a citizen could approach a county commissioner to have it introduced, and somehow, you know, that's something that isn't widely known, but it's definitely a possibility.
Do you guys let them know that when they come in, that they can take it to a commissioner and it won't cost them anything?
I didn't present that, I should have, I guess, I just thought, you know, in order to proceed with the ordinance amendment, typically applicants are required to submit an application. I will make sure that we do that in the future.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea, because I would agree, I mean, this one is pretty logical, but I suppose if they couldn't get a commissioner to do it, then they could pay the fee and see if they could...
Mr. Chair.
Which is the case of the next agenda item.
Take a little heat off of Dan. I had a telephone call from the folks at Tree Forks, and asked me what I thought about this, and I said, "I would support that, I don't see anything wrong with it at all, to have a dental clinic next to the Three Forks Inn, especially with the population and things that's going around there." That's the last I heard of it, until now. So I don't, I didn't know they were going to proceed right away, or what they were going to do, but I didn't tell them either that they had that choice.
And we did put the two together and said, "Are you willing to share the cost?" Because we knew both of them wanted to proceed with this ordinance amendment, so we got them to share the cost of the application.
We got the numbers straight in the motion.
Yes.
So, any further discussion relative to the motion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item M.
I'm sorry. Item M is a first reading and public hearing of ordinance amendment 1401, Vernard LLC, to amend the vacation home rental ordinance to change the maximum number of bedrooms allowed to be seven. Planning Commission recommended denial of this ordinance amendment. This came about because of a violation we became aware of after the applicant came to us in regards to their property. We became that this was a violation on the property, and once we reviewed it, we realized they couldn't apply for a vacation home rental, because they actually have seven bedrooms. Our current ordinance only allows for five. And so, one of their options was to attempt to amend the ordinance to allow up to seven. Planning Commission had reviewed this not once, but twice. One of the times, it was recommended that we do a little further research with the state in regards to where the five bedrooms came up. We did some research, there was nothing ever in their regulations, or administrative rules that indicated it was limited to five bedrooms. However, it's kind of an in-house rule, as I wrote in my staff report with the state, that five bedrooms is a typical house, however, they do state that they actually could have up to 10 bedrooms in a vacation home rental. I also then did some further research into other regulations, vacation home rental regulations from other counties. Some do allow for additional bedrooms, however, seemed the majority of them did limit it to five bedrooms. There are some just stating that they could have more if the septic system allowed, or they said this, you know, allowed basically up to a maximum number of people staying in the house. Planning Commission reviewed it, they thought they would be, they didn't like going up to seven bedrooms, they said it kind of isn't typical of a single-family residential unit, so they indicated that they'd like to keep it at five and denied it. They also indicated that they'd rather see this property become a planned unit development, so it's limited to just this one property that could allow for additional bedrooms. And so, staff thought it was appropriate if they had the right septic systems in place, or wastewater system that could handle those additional bedrooms. So, Planning Commission recommended denial.
And that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I guess I have a question. Given the fact that this party owns a facility that has, physically can accommodate seven bedrooms, are they allowed to use the five? And if so, under what terms and conditions? Or are they totally denied the use of all seven?
At this time, they're denied to use the property for any type of vacation home rental unless they get a conditional use permit for five bedrooms. Or, as Planning Commission, in the minutes, they basically said that they could apply for a planned unit development for, allow for the seven bedrooms, for this exception. So that's the direction I was going to let them know. They have the option, of course, of removing two bedrooms, but that would be difficult to enforce, so the other option is to apply for the planned unit development for this property, to allow for the seven-bedroom use. She did indicate that this fulfills a unique use within the hills for family reunions or large parties, all to stay within one area to all be together to celebrate whatever occasion they're there for. And as the state indicated, you know, hotel and our vacation home rental, it all depends on how it's used. A vacation home rental is rented out to one party, or a hotel or motel, they're rented out to different parties, to different people. And a lodge, they said, "We don't have a lot of those in this area," or a lodge, like on the east side of the state, is like different hunting parties, where in this area, we rented out, they rent out to one party that allows, you know, that could have up to 20 people.
But even if they, even if they've got seven bedrooms, they can still get a conditional use permit for five bedrooms, to use five of the bedrooms for a vacation rental home?
Right, they could, certainly could do that. That'd be very hard to regulate them not, you know, we'd have to go in and inspect to make sure those bedrooms are closed off and not used in that type of situation.
Maybe you could get the city police to do that, like shotgun willies.
Get a lot of experience. Mr. Chairman, the thoughts, I was on the planning commission when we did this, and the thought was, the idea of vacation home rental ordinance was, they let people use their home to rent out, to try to help pay the mortgage and the taxes, and once you get out, and it's all subjective, I know, but once you get past five bedrooms, it's not a home anymore. Now you've got, you're into a different category of things, that was their thought.
Okay, so, again, I'll just mention that Vernard LLC paid a fee to do this.
Correct.
And they'll, whatever else they have to do, they'll end up paying a fee for it.
Correct.
Anyway...
Dan, I'm not picking up on here where the, what the zoning is of this property.
The property is currently zoned low-density residential district.
Okay, so that solves that problem. And how many acres is it?
Three, I believe, a little over three acres. I don't know the exact acreage.
Okay.
But it does meet the requirements of that zoning district for which it's located in, and they would be allowed to apply for a conditional use permit for a vacation home rental, if that's all they were going to use was five bedrooms.
Well, they could put a library in the other two.
They certainly could.
Workout room.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Do we have something in the ordinance that talks about the number of people in a vacation home rental at any one time?
Yes, it is regulated.
How do you regulate that?
It's based upon a number of bedrooms, and they're allowed up to four additional people.
How do you verify that that's being complied with?
It's very difficult. It's based, pretty much based upon a complaint basis, and we'd have to have some pretty detailed documentation showing that they're violating that part of our ordinance.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Good, I'd just like to make a comment, I guess, I mentioned, I know Commissioner Troutman had mentioned this a while back, of doing outline form for our staff reports, and you can see a number of our staff reports are going that direction, and just like to get some comments as to whether or not you like that, if you'd like to proceed with that, or if, go back to our normal format.
I think it's easier to read in the new format, and you're not repeating those boxes of information over and over again. That gets kind of irritating to me. If that's the information we're dealing with, then that's the information, so...
What, is there anything that dictates the form that these staff reports are in?
Nope, it's just a matter of preference as to whether or not you like it that way. I believe this is as long as we can inform the commissioners of the information that they need to know in order to make a decision.
Well, it certainly could be a work in progress.
I guess I'd like to, would you like us to proceed with doing the outline form?
I like the outline better.
It's all right by me.
We could certainly look into doing a hybrid option too, some of each.
Surprise us.
Okay.
We'll let you know if we don't like it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're, items from the chair, and Jay, I appreciate you being here. I have an email that came from Michael Schindler, to, and it ended up with the involvement of our future highway superintendent, Tom Wilsey, but it relates to the Hawthorne Ditch, and it's being placed in a culvert, and this gentleman wants to know about that happening so he can expand his garden and that sort of thing. But I think it's more complicated than that, in the fact that the Hawthorne Ditch has the easement, and they would be in control. I mentioned this to Heine and Tom prior to the ceremony, and in the discussion, Heine mentioned that Gerald Biese had made contact with them to suggest that the ditch attorney and possibly Jay would start to work on an agreement between the county and the ditch company relative to this process. And, so Jay, do you have any thoughts in that regard?
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Actually, I did get a chance to visit briefly with Heine at the ceremony this morning. I think, you know, the Hawthorne Ditch has the easement and has the jurisdiction over that area, so it'd be a matter of them basically authorizing the county to come. My understanding is that they would like the county to do all of the construction and spend the money to get it done, and then I suppose probably maintain it to the extent it needs maintained from here on out. If the county doesn't have the present ability to enter that easement to do that, it would just be a matter of them granting us that authority in a contract, and us agreeing then to do whatever it is that we agree to do inside that easement. So, I don't think it has to be a horribly difficult agreement, but it would be them allowing us to come in and do whatever it is everyone agreed we would do. Dig a big hole, put a bunch of culvert in, fill it back up, and then maintain it.
So, in terms of the...
I'm sure they would like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Clarify that too. The, in terms of the easement itself, if there needs to be some work done on the culvert sometime down the road, would it be a county easement, or the Hawthorne Ditch easement?
Well, they would grant the easement for the purpose intended, because we don't own, we don't own the land, we don't have any jurisdiction, as I understand it, on that land. The easement would be for this ditch, and it would have to, it should have terms in there, allowing, for instance, the county of Pennington to enter said easement to conduct whatever construction maintenance is necessary for the following purposes, length of time, so it'd be them granting the easement to us.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think, I doubt that they own the land, they just have an easement on it too, right? So, one would want to take a look at that easement to see, can they grant an easement to someone else?
If that's the case, I guess I was impressed somehow that they own the land, maybe, if not...
I doubt it.
I think there's areas of both, I think there's some areas that they own, and then there's some areas where they have an easement.
In this, in this email, this gentleman says, "If there is a plan in the future, will the ditch be filled in when the culvert is installed, and can I reclaim my property that I pay taxes on and can't currently use?"
Um...
Long as we can come in with a backhoe and tear up your ground afterwards.
Yeah, yes, it would be a matter of reading the actual easement that's in place to see if it contemplates what is being requested or considered. If not, that easement would have to be amended to do exactly that, and it would be up to the owners of the ground to grant that easement.
Mr. Chair.
Could be complicated.
And I understand all of the easements and things that you're talking about here, and where this may need to go, but I want to clarify that anything that I may have said about putting this in a culvert would not be totaled, to my thoughts, would not be totally at the expense of Pennington County. This would be a shared cost by the ditch people and where the irrigators and the county, and, yes, in Rapid City also.
Mr. Chair, I would go along with Commissioner Davis, that's how I understood it, and I just think it sounds like there's confusion among the landowners as to what is really going to happen, and we don't have the complete plan yet. And so I would hate to really get us tied down to any particular statement of any kind until there's been time to look at the whole plan. And we are in a transition with our highway department right now, who normally handles that sort of a project, and it sounds like we need some legal opinions on what is in place there. I think that it'd be nice to give Mr. Schindler an answer, but we're not ready to do that. I feel like we still have a long ways to go to get it done, but the original objective is stated, that we were going to start to provide funding by collecting those drainage fees and putting it towards the Hawthorne Ditch.
The main objective is to drain the swamp.
Yeah, that's true, and I was heading for the rest of it, so, yeah.
You know, and I think it would be nice, of course, if the Hawthorne Ditch, and as you mentioned... You know, and I think it would be nice, of course, if the Hawthorne Ditch, and as you mentioned, if they have legal counsel, which I believe they did have some with, if they would try to put, as Commissioner Troutman said, some kind of proposal together which outlines the ownership, who has the right to grant the easement. I don't know if the Hawthorne Ditch is part of some kind of drainage district that has independent statutory authority to grant easements on its own over other private property for purposes of carrying out their duties under statute. That's a possibility, but that would have to be researched. So, it'd be nice if they would do that preliminary work and present it to us where we can then take it and start looking at it ourselves as their proposal.
Our Mr. Chair, quite often, it's sort of like a committee, which we'd love, I'd love to have another committee. But it seems like it would be at least a, a good idea to get a few people responsible for actually moving it forward and have them work together to bring something back to the commission. And I don't know at what point you'd want to, to appoint those folks, but it seems like it'll kind of flounder around until we get some focus.
The, it's not, not an agenda item, but given the fact that, that there is activity that includes highway department and and the Hawthorne Ditch people and so on, I, I wanted to make sure the commission was aware of it and I don't know if you need anything from us to interface with any of the dialogue that might come along or not.
I, one thought, do you want to make it an agenda item and have the Hawthorne Ditch folks come in and actually give some kind of presentation, at least conceptually, of what they have in mind? And then at that point, then I suppose a task force or a committee to further look into it might be in order. But it might be worth having an agenda item.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, we, he has a list of questions and perhaps Jay should be answering Schindler's list. I know, it's a bad stretch for that one.
I was waiting for it.
Okay, I think we have a sense of things now, so we'll go to committee reports. Nancy, do you want to-
I, I really don't have any committee reports to spend a lot of time on. I, I just want to thank Holly again. You just keep us in line when we have events like we did this morning with the cornerstone. And I really, really appreciate it. And Jessica helped her a lot too. I mean, I was able, I, I really appreciate it.
So, now is that committee disbanded?
I think it is.
I see.
I think we're done with that cornerstone committee.
Okay, Commissioner Holloway?
I don't have any committee reports. I would just share with the rest of the board that I asked the auditor, or the treasurer to get me some information on vehicle licensed in Pennington County and the counties in the state that have a wheel tax. I've got that information. I don't know if anybody else is interested. I've talked to a couple of you. I'll give it to Holly. She, she can send it out to everybody. And those who are interested can look it over and those that aren't can throw it away.
I went to a Black Hills Association meeting yesterday and, and some, the speaker was from LTAP, the Local Transportation Assistance Program. And I didn't really do much. But, but the one thing that did come out of it was at the July meeting, which would be in Sturgis, is the time when if we have any resolutions that we want to get passed by the Black Hills Association, which is where it starts, and then to, and to the state association and to the convention, July is the time to have them in. So, I think I'll get a hold of department heads and if they got something, and I talked to Janet already, she might have something. Now would be the time because that will be approaching fast and, and that's when it should be done.
Mr. Chair, I have a few items here, but the Golden Coyote National Guard training is coming up shortly this summer. They're looking for nine hundred guardsmen and women to be stationed at Ellsworth Air Force Base during the Golden Coyote. There isn't any National Guardmen right now, I guess, from this area that are down, downrange. That's probably a good thing. We have about six hundred personnel from Ellsworth downrange, along with our air crews. Recently, and as you see, not just to use the example, but the picture on the wall over there, the one that went to Libya, they just tried to, tried a deal recently and they, one of our air crews flew to Guam. And this was strictly a practice target range in Guam. They didn't drop any bombs or anything like that, but they flew out of Ellsworth for air refueling to Guam and struck the target electronically and, and flew back again. Now, there's only four bases right now in the United States that has that capability. And one of them is Barksdale, the B fifty-two's and Dias and the B ones and the Whitman B twos and Ellsworth, the B one. Now, if somebody was here and paying attention, they'd realize that there's actually five of those. And one of them is the B fifty-two base in North Dakota, except its runways closed now and the B fifty-twos are in Ellsworth. So, there's only, there's only four bases that can have that capability. They did mention that the, the B one is, was built to start with in the mid-eighties. The B fifty-two's in the sixties. And our air tankers that made those four refueling spots that were made in the fifties. And they're getting awful nervous about going out there over the ocean and flying that far with fifty's air tankers. So, they're saying that they think it's about time maybe the Air Force builds new tankers. There will not be an air show at Ellsworth this year, but there will be an open house on the base. And they haven't set the date for that yet, but it's coming. And I'll let you know when that takes place. That's it.
Thank you. I, I don't have any additional comments, but I would commend all the folks, Nancy, Jessica, Holly. We're well done this morning and-
And don't forget the Central State Sheriff for their job of putting that all together.
True. Does anyone have anything creative they want to move forward?
To adjourn.
Not a motion, second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.